A lot, just to do this as in the photo here. Zach.
Was it wet my beach?
Yes.
It is.
The ones who gave the important man, it's name. Zach.
With all the brothers.
Yes.
You're not too.
That's where he made empty puppet was born in Alaska, not for your country. Zach was fortunate enough and so to first get a body of her boots. It will take color and. I don't know what you were. Adam was made a man. Correct. Yeah, I have rocks and rocks for fun and everything. Weather, depression, pollution, all forms of this natural process by which Bach is broken down. Zach was born. Yes. That's our policy. We're announcing his American citizenship years earlier, this chess match for typing exile in 2008. Have those Bobby Fisher? Yes. And have the exile from 1200. Out of the team, that's your hero of this country. I believe we should stay longer in the United States. We were talking in 1890. It's Chile. No. Zach was cheap. That's right. That's our policy. That's what just happened in 1919, jobs the first of the country to turn. Well, that's all of this during. Zach was a Wall Street. Yes. Then I could tune. Uh, that's our policy. So he's at site. Seventeen twenty, this bridge lover, the philosopher of men. Alexander, the John Lewis. We all tear. Zach. Boxed away. This nickel was called. Like a nature's. Those social. North Greek low. And they give. Is it not walking through the worst evil? They call it. We live in the. I made it first. University. Is it experience?
Hey, Mary. Hey.
Here we go. Twenty thousand dollars here and earnest to do that.
There are lucky ones.
Eighteen. So card a little here, let's see what sort of uh just.
Take me. Take me, take me along.
Take me to a lot. Take me to the fair.
Rob is on.
Yeah.
Take me to St. Louis.
Take me to St. Louis. Okay.
This whole song.
Let's be me a thing. All right. Now Ernest, you can choose one of those or give us one of your own, think a better one. Why uh it's up to you entirely. Take me to leader, take me to St. Louis and take me to the fair. What is your pleasure?
I think I'll go along with type.
Is this your leader? Maybe up there. I told him it was for his sake, can you see the one hundred dollar? Take me to the moon. Okay. I know it, but they didn't know. This reaching for it. Right. Maybe see the two hundred fifty dollar number. If you need your. What do you think? Take me to the ball game. Can you go under me please? Fine. Okay, sliding.
See, I don't know how to take video. I don't want my picture here, but I don't know how to take it out. Are you gonna sit over here? Let me move that there.
Oh, right.
Just if you don't. If you don't want your video on, just hit start video at the top.
I don't see that. Where do we see that?
Very top of the screen.
There's nothing there, just has my picture.
So click, so touch, touch the screen. That's probably why, touch the screen first.
Okay, now what do I do? It says zoom.
Hit start.
I'm sorry.
Do you see start video? Hit that.
I see stop video.
Yeah, then hit that, yep.
Oh, good, thank you. Are you there?
You're very welcome, yep, I don't see anymore.
Thank you. What's your name?
My name is Matt.
Thank you very much, I'm just learning.
You're welcome, well, you did good.
We have to listen. You know who it shows you? What did he say his name was? I don't know how to work this.
It was you.
I don't want them to see us, so like, you know.
Could everyone please make sure that their screen is or their um computer is muted?
You just pull on you.
Zach, you're not muted, can you mute yourself?
It's great to smoke.
Um, I'm gonna. You can't then be, um, would you be able to mute your computer?
Let's see if they have a, you know, another view of it.
Two.
Excuse me.
Okay, thank you everybody for uh coming to this meetings uh tonight. We're gonna, it's a, it's a one hour um town hall meeting. Uh, I've had held these before on a couple of the topics uh in twenty twenty one and thought this was appropriate to cover and and have an open dialogue on this particular area, which is our waste removal in town. Well, I'll open up with about five minutes or less of kind of the what and the why and with a few comments, just to frame in exactly where we are with this and then uh we'll open it up to either questions or comments from the public. Uh, I do have um Kim Humphrey, our business administrator with us, and I think Biagio Capone is our uh our public work supervisors with us also. I'll, I'm sorry, Tim Sexsmith, our council president. I'll um field most of the questions or comments if I need assistance from any of them on a more technical question, like they could certainly jump in. But let me start with the what. So um what is the change that uh we're moving towards in the municipality? We are shifting our recycling from a weekly to a biweekly schedule. Uh, we all, we are also opening up our, I'll call our yard. An additional eight hours and two extra days. So that people have more access to our yard. In the bulk area, uh, we will be making some changes in bulk. Um, we will be picking up on a schedule uh on Thursdays, uh each home will have the um ability to to have their bulk out six times a year. And that schedule will be forthcoming also. We'll continue to accept appliances and electronic uh at the electronics at the yard. And and we'll make some accommodations for special pickup and special cases for appliances. We still have the stickers uh that we'll be utilizing for bulk uh going forward. And then in the area of um the uh trash pickup, there's really no change in trash pickup at this time, and I don't foresee that happening. So why? Uh, well, one of the reasons on the recycling change is our our off season volume is down between forty and forty five percent on in a normal year, and that's pretty much been the case the last couple of years. What that does for us is if we move to a biweekly schedule, we pick up at least twenty eight hours a week of freed up resources. What that does is um it gives us the ability to train our DPW uh associates in other areas and also gives us the ability to work on some projects that we continually have. I'll give you some examples, we we continually repair our lockers. We've brought that in house because our vendors, that was more difficult to get vendors to do that, so we repair our lockers. We're looking at repairing the footbridge on uh Lake Terrace Avenue as an example. Our senior center, our recreation center, we continue to do repairs with that with our public works and training and cross training, uh particularly our younger DPW workers is something that we've been wanting to try to do. On the recycling side, we'll also save some fuel and emissions and some other efficiencies. Uh, on the bulk side, uh, this helps us get a real handle on bulk. Currently, we're mixing um some of when we bring our garbage to the centers. We are mixing our bulk in our garbage, which is not a great practice. Uh, we've also seen a pretty significant increase in bulk uh in the last couple of years. We want to try to get a better handle on that. The changes we're making really have no public health or safety issues as we see it. You know, it is an administrative responsibility to maximize the value to the residents, and that's what we're trying to do is maximize value to the residents. Uh, so we're, we're, we're moving in that direction. We did do some benchmarking and we we tried to key in on the towns right around us, which are Avon, Spring Lake, Spring Lake Heights, Madison Square, Neptune City, Neptune Seagriff, and all those communities um do their recycling um uh every other week. We clearly, as I said in um some messages out, we're gonna continue to assess this. Clearly, clearly, uh, the summertime, we'll take a very close look right before the summer, assess how it's gone from February through May, and then uh we'll certainly adjust if appropriate. Uh, but we're, we're not anywhere near that at that point, at this point. Uh, so that's uh, that's the overall summary of.
Mayor.
Yes, yes, Kim.
Um, I just wanted to let you know that our um commercial Zoom account maxes out at one hundred people, which you're at right now. So we have to make sure that people know if people are trying to get in or people are trying to contact them, that we will post this on the website immediately.
Okay, uh, recording, yeah, uh, well, um, maybe uh, let's see, who can do that?
No.
Kim, could you have somebody do that while we're having this meeting? Just put that email out or something? Okay, thank you. The max is at a hundred, you said?
That's correct.
Okay. Uh. Okay, so with that, we'll um we'll um open it up to questions or comments. Jackson Temple, Jack, you've had your hand up um for a while now. You're unmuted, Jack, go ahead. Yeah, Jack.
Old people.
Why don't we go, why don't we go to the next person? Jack, Jack, we can't hear you.
Your device is on mute. Your volume might be down or your device is on mute. You are unmuted for the meeting, but your device or your volume is down.
Live audio, so.
Why don't I should if we're, if we're waiting, I have a very quick question, Mr. Mayor.
What, why don't we, why don't we go to um next person, Don Greenberg?
Hi, how you doing? Um, well, I I have some technical issues with the recycling and and one suggestion. Um, instead of taking the recycling down to once every two weeks, why don't you take trash down the once a week? And then keep the recycling at once every other week. And my other si, uh, my other comment on the technical aspects of this it uh is that we're recycling actually more now because um Mazda takes number five and foil. So people are putting more in their recycling buckets. This is going to create a hardship for people. And lastly, uh, the buckets for the film get filled up in a month, let alone two months. It's gonna be all over. I think this is gonna create, this is gonna create issues. Um, you're gonna see people throwing their recycling and their trash. Environmentally, I think you're gonna see cans overflowing. You're gonna see stuff ending up down at the beaches and the ocean. I think it's a bad idea. Plus, people are gonna have to spend more money to buy more cans now. So those are my issues technically with it, but my big problem is the process. How come the public wasn't consulted?
Why, why don't, why don't we answer your first set of questions? And and oh, by the way, I said, uh, I don't know if I said this upfront, but we'll limit each person to five minutes because we want to make sure we get as many people as possible. So let me try to zip through your first set of questions. We don't want to go to trash uh once a week versus twice because that could pose more of a public health issue than recycling. Recycling uh should not pose a public health issue. The film, um, we can certainly, we'll, we'll monitor that right up front and see if that causes any issues, and if it does, we'll, we'll increase the uh the frequency of that, so uh so those are the two points against that. So what was your other point?
No, why wasn't the public made aware of this? I mean, you guys have had to know about this for a long time. Uh, it was on the calendars, so the calendars, you know, we didn't send the calendars to a psychic printer and say, hey, think about what we want to put on here and just do it for us. You know, it takes about a month for that process to go forth. So why wasn't this put on the council meeting? Um, what else? Uh, how come the environmental commission didn't know about it? How come the council didn't know about it? It seems like we're doing things behind closed doors, and and I did have a very nice conversation with Kim the other day, and she mentioned that you didn't know about. Well, if you didn't, you should have because you're the chief administrator of the town. So I think, and we have a communications director, how come she didn't know? Yeah, it seems like this was, you know, and believe me, I love our DPW. I've lived in a lot of towns in my sixty five years, and this is the best DPW that I've ever seen. So, you know, I love Biagio and those guys, but from my conversation with Kim, it seems like, you know, one person knew about this, Biagio. So I find that very hard to believe that nobody else was in the loop on this and that the public was completely excluded, not to, not to mention most of the rest of the governing bodies of the town were completely excluded. I find that intolerable that that this was done in this manner. And it seems to be a pattern in this town.
I would, I, I would, I would not say it's a pattern, and I would take exception to that, uh, but in this case, you're right, the council wasn't.
Shut up.
Normally, um in this case, I would handle this communication issue, this, I call it a personal matter myself. Particularly when it's a communication mistake and and it that doesn't really impact safety or financials or ethics or legality. Unfortunately, um, you know, it, it has cast a little bit of a negative fall on our municipal government and to, and and to me. And I take accountability for that communication, but I have initiated a formal review of this matter uh with our HR um professionals and our labor attorney. So we'll get the communications mess, we'll get the decision miss, and any recommended actions coming out of there, so.
Well, I would disagree.
I, I don't, let me finish, please. I don't believe that there was any ill intent. Um, I'm confident we can clear this up pretty quickly. It's unfortunate um that it came to this point, but that, that's where we are.
So, but that doesn't answer my question, why wasn't the public notified? I don't see it as an HR problem. I see the communications problem. Sounds to the public.
Public, the public was notified in the um, in the calendar, but.
After the fact.
Mayor, you can't disclose anymore about the um personnel issue. I'm sorry, it can't be discussed. I was not right, so it noticed, nor was Mr. Biagio Capone.
Yeah.
No, but you know, what I'm saying is, you know, it had to be known. So, you know, why wouldn't you just come to the public and say, you know, this is what we're thinking of doing? You know, get some input from the.
Don, I'm sorry, I'm sorry that you're not um hearing what I'm saying, but I'm, what I told you was that the council wasn't informed, nor was I. So that's the answer to that question.
Well, who knew about it and how long ago?
As Ms. Humphrey just said, I am getting to the bottom of that in a very formal manner. Uh, I feel as though I need to do it in a formal manner.
Right.
And that's what I'm doing.
So why don't we just put this on hold until you can get input from the public?
Because, no, it's not, it's not, the, the, the decisions that the, the program that we're moving forward on um isn't a bad program, it makes sense.
Well, it's a matter of opinion.
Yeah, it is, it is.
So, I, I don't know, I just think, you know, the, the delay it for thirty days, get some public input. It's, it's not the end of the world if you delay it for thirty days and get some public input and you know, there's a hundred people on this and a lot more that couldn't get on. So you know people are pissed, if you pardon my language.
Yeah, well, and just another point, um, the um, the calendar went to print on January fourteenth, so you, you said, you know, we knew about this for months and months and months for that.
No, I didn't say that, that, don't put words in my mouth, please. I said you knew about it for a while, and January fourteenth was prior to the council meeting, so.
Well, no, you, you're, well, actually now, Don, you're putting words in my mouth. I never said we knew, knew about it for a while.
No, no, I said, I said we knew about it for, you, you knew about it for a while, that's what I said. But. Okay, but anyway, I, that's my suggestion.
Okay, thank you.
Put it on hold.
No, appreciate it, thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, Jack, are you, uh, can you talk now or no? It's not, I'm gonna move to the next person.
Please speak with Jack, so you know, we're trying to get the participant number upgraded to allow everybody in the meeting. So if anyone has people texting them or contacting them, please let them know we are working on getting an upgrade in the participant number.
Yeah, and uh, we are recording this, so we're gonna. Yeah, and uh, we are recording this, so we're going to release it as soon as it comes on. As soon as we're done. Okay, um, Lenore? If you could go off mute.
Yeah, hey there, uh, Mayor Fox, this is Dan Cooperman. I'm on my wife's phone.
Okay.
I, I'm doing well, thanks. Yeah, uh, this certainly was a surprise to me. I was wondering, um, is this a decision that can be reversed? Or at least, uh, could you consider, could you consider um, keeping the schedule uh, the, as, as the normal schedule during the summer? So every week providing recycling.
Yeah, that's a good question.
We, we grow kind of by four X, right? During the summer, at least four X.
Yeah, no, no, it's a, it's a good, it's a good question, and it's a question we've already kicked around that. Um, nine months out of the year, our volumes down between forty and forty-five percent, which gave us the opportunity to free up those resources. You know, we, we, we believe that probably the Memorial Day to Labor Day is going to be different, and we probably, um, we probably increased that. But um, w- we're just trying to um, get started, take a look at it. So your, your point's well taken, and we um, we have had some discussions just in the last few days on that very topic. So, good question.
Got it. And, and just lastly, was this a, was this a, a financial motivation? You know, are we, are we saving money by doing this? Was that the, the ultimate goal for, for kind of pursuing this or, or what? I'm just confused on the catalyst.
Yeah, so a- as I said when I kicked off, um, recycling is an area where if we've, we could, we freed up over twenty hours a week of resources. What we're trying to do with those resources is cross-train them. Because if you look at our public works guides that are on um, on um, trash recycling and, and bulk, most of them are, are younger folks that are looking for training, cross-training, and to develop some other skills. So we're going to afford them that opportunity, things like locker repair, um, you know, redoing the footbridge, those projects I mentioned before. So it frees up resources for us. And additionally, there are, you know, there is some savings in fuel emissions when we're, we're not um, doing that and we're doing um, more projects um, with the overall group. So did we calculate uh, to the, to the dollar um, amount? No, we haven't. But um, you know, we'll, we'll be, we're looking at that as we go. So, good question. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. I appreciate it. I definitely think if, if you could reconsider, at least in season, you know, when, when our population does grow, that, that would, I think that would allay a lot of the concern of the community.
No, that's, thank you. It's a good question.
Just so you know, um, we are not cutting any of the employees. So we will have um, the employees available that if there are any issues. And this is not by ordinance. So if this is something that we see on a Monday or Tuesday, we need to up, you know, the pickup. This is something that we can announce to the public, and we have that ability. It's the, right now, utilizing the twenty hours a week for employees to do other tasks and jobs in the borough. And also, they, we did increase the number of hours that the recycling yard is open for drop-off as well.
Yeah, I forgot to mention that. That's a good point. Thank you, Kim.
Um, hey, Mr. Mayor Nancy Meadows uh, was next up with her hand.
Uh, yeah, thank you, Nancy.
Yes, thank you, uh, Tim and uh, Mr. Fox. Um, to me, there are distinct separations to discuss here. One is the process of how this decision was made and who actually made it. And then it's, how are we going to adjust to a new schedule? Um, I agree with so much of what Mr. Greenberg said. This is so unique. And it's not a matter of legal. There was a person who said, fine, do this. And now I'm hearing, oh, but we didn't know, we didn't know. But then he said, but we've been kicking the idea around. You knew.
No, what I said, Ms. Meadows, is I said, what I said was.
Excuse me, this is my time to speak.
Well, no, this is a town, excuse me, this is a town hall meeting, so I'm just trying to.
From the courtesy of being informed is another pattern and another slap in the face. Regarding personnel and developing their skills for something else, or having them do something, don't use the loggers as an excuse. That's part of the beach utility. That has nothing to do with the regular municipal garbage budget. I would also agree quite honestly with this film ridiculousness, of which I was only allowed one can, God forbid, but others were used to hold up plastic at the beach. I fill mine up in one week. So quite honestly, the rest of my plastic just goes in with the rest of my garbage. Um, and I do think it would be wise to have the old current schedule for the summer when our population gets out of hand, because you cannot expect homeowners who are only here on a weekend, or visit for the weekend, to only put the recyclables out twice a month. And that's the other thing, you need to really clarify. Bi-weekly, twice a week, every other week. Some of us are a little type A and like to mark our calendars accordingly. And I'll be honest with you, I don't understand this. And again, had the public been consulted or even informed as opposed to a calendar, well, actually, I was informed by the BA. So maybe I'm a little different, but it just adds to confusion. And the fact that we are actually having to spend time dealing with this, you can't blame it all on Public Works, okay? They didn't just on their own decide this. And for once, it would be really nice for the government to take responsibility for the way they treat the taxpayers.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Meadows.
It's singular.
I said, Ms. Meadows.
Correct, and that is incorrect.
Okay, I'm sorry. Um, as I said, I just wanted to clarify a point. The point that about the last couple of days was that we were talking about the summer months. Uh, we were having a conversation about that. Um, you know, clearly, the responsibility is with the government, government and myself. And as I said, we are looking at the communications, the decisions, and the recommended actions formally, so that we get a very clear path as to where we're going with it. So, thank you. Uh, why don't we go to um, Thomas, Thomas's iPad? Whoever that is.
Yeah, hello, I was on mute, thank you. Um, maybe a comment and then a question. I um, I'm somewhat new to the process, I'm somewhat new to Bradley. And I really, I'm going to reflect that I really admire the passion for all of us who want to contribute to keep our town beautiful and clean and participate in recycling. It's a wonderful thing. And really, that, that we have our, our system underway is fantastic, and, and I believe it works. Um, a quick question, and then I really do have two others. If we exceed this pale limit, whatever can hold for the film, do we retain the ability to go to the town? I'm going to call it a dump, sorry, the site, and drop it off ourselves rather than having to wait for the town to come and pick it up?
Uh, I'm going to defer that to Biagio, but I think the answer is yes.
The answer is yes.
Yeah, okay, so terrific. Okay, the others are maybe for you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'll start with the perhaps more complicated one, the bulk part of this discussion. Yeah, the bulk pickup. I'm not terribly familiar with it, but I do, I have had the opportunity to drop some items off at the town center. Is there any change to that part of the system?
Yes, but, but that's not going to happen until uh, the March timeframe, and we're going to send out a, a pretty formal newsletter and website uh, deal on that. Um, we're, we're moving towards pickup. Um, there will be some bulk that can be dropped off, appliances and electronics. Um, but we're trying to move away from um, the level that we are, the, the activity. The way it's happening right now is just um, it's not as organized as we'd like it to be. So we're, we're, we'll, we'll get a complete um, uh, outline of what is and isn't um, coming up here in the next few weeks.
Okay, I, I just want to say I'm a huge advocate of having that resource. I think it's fantastic.
Yeah.
And, and um, it's been a great resource to be able to take some debris out of our house or our yard and drop it off there. And it's been very accommodating. I know there are several, there, there's the, the um, organic debris. There's, of course, the recycling debris, and then there's if you have to drop off a chair or a piece of furniture or carpet. It's just been a terrific resource to have the ability to do that. Um, and, and usually, there hasn't been any costs associated for the residents who choose to do that. Is it, is that correct? I mean, it's specific fee.
Well, we have stickers, we have, we do have stickers.
Well, that's for the pickup, I recall.
For the pickup, yeah, yeah.
This is for the drop-off.
And that'll, and, and again, we're going to outline that and change that somewhat. Um, and again, that'll be part of the um, what we outline going forward.
Okay, so, and then my last question was, is there a timeline for all this? Because I, I'm not familiar with the timeline for these changes.
Yeah, there, it's on the website for recycling. It's starting um, next week. And um, we're, for the bulk, it's not until the March timeframe. And we're, we, we've got more, uh, more detailed communication coming out on that.
Okay, and that currently is on the website. Okay, thank you.
Mayor Biagio was trying to speak and he could not unmute. I also want to let the public know, we're just awaiting Zoom to approve our um, upgrade. It's in the process. So in a few minutes, everyone should be uh, allowed in. That's in the waiting room. We're unable to log on.
Okay, Biagio, I don't see it here. So can you just start talking? Where is Biagio? Do we lose him again?
He, he's still muted. Biagio, you're still on mute.
Can we go on to somebody else before the time's up?
Yeah, sure. Um, Biagio, get yourself off mute and we'll um, we'll um.
He, he seems to have dropped off. He may be having some manner of uh, yeah, technical issues, but.
Yeah, Kristen Depp. Kristen, you gotta.
Hi, hi, actually, this is um, Kristen Mahoney. Um, I'm uh, at Kristen Depp's house, so we could be on this call. Um, I just wanted to ask about, um, I know we, we're just talking about it, but I think it's imperative that we start to outline what's going to happen with the, with the bulk pickup. Um, so that we're not just given a calendar telling us what is going to happen with regard to the bulk pickup. Um, it seems like, uh, you know, we can take appliances and metal to the yard, but bulk pickup is kind of up in the air. It'll happen. And we can start using perhaps only stickers um, to get our bulk pickup done, which is a revenue source, as opposed to having the ability to take uh, bulk items and bring them to the yard, even though the yard is going to be open. Um, which is great for the town to have that revenue stream and an inconvenience for the rest of us who live here and pay taxes and would like to use our cars to bring things to the yard and drop them off. Can you explain to me, uh, first of all, why we are not yet clear on what's going to happen? Or why we're talking about the need for residents to purchase stickers to bring things to a dump that's already or to a, a recycling center that's already open? And, um, and it's going to be open uh, for a longer amount of time as opposed, you know, to just uh, you know, why we have to do that at this point?
Yeah, I think, uh, so to first, I guess the overall question, um, we, we will have a detailed communication out um, in the March timeframe when we, be- before we implement, probably, probably before March. So that when we implement, um, everybody's clear on, on what's what. So, um, you know, I, I think that's kind of the best answer I can give right now is that um, rather than kind of go back and forth, I'd rather get it out on paper to people so that they clearly understand what it is. I, I don't know, Kim, if you have anything to add to that. You're on mute, Kim.
I'm talking. I'm trying to find out if our numbers are increased. Biagio is on the phone with me, um, if there's anything that he has to answer. Sorry.
No, that, like, that's, that's fine at this point. So we'll get that out. Um, Kristen, thank you.
I, I just would like the council and you, the mayor and Kim to understand that my thought of having to pay to have someone pick up bulk and our streets looking every once in a while like a garbage dump because we need people to come pick up our bulk every once in a while, as opposed to the ability to for free go up and jump our large items at the recycling center is a big concern. And I think it's a big concern for a lot of people. And I know that you've unitarily come out with this new calendar. Um, it would be nice if there could be a conversation about it. And, you know, you could take things into account. Um, you know, another communication made uh, without having conversation is, is not going to help anybody, but thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Okay, um, Paul in the Shempkin, hey, don't Paul.
Actually, Jack Gen Tempo is before me. He's been up for quite a while.
No, I know, but I'm waiting for Jack to, Jack, are you, can, can we hear you now?
Okay.
That's why we've been waiting. I've been waiting for Jack. As soon as I hear Jack, he'll, he'll be here next time.
I, I was one of the many people who couldn't get on for a long time because you had a hundred-person maximum. So I'm sorry if I missed this question already, but why was there no public discussion of this before the decision was made?
Yeah, I, I did cover that, Paul, and um, there um, in this case, y- you're absolutely correct. It wasn't public discussion. And we're going through uh, an exercise right now to understand exactly how all that happened.
Well, I, obviously, you know, this is the cart before the horse. This is really not a good sign, Mayor. Um, this is a very critical element for our town. Uh, we've been working so hard to make sure that we cut down on plastics, getting on our beach, to do recycling properly. And uh, I mean, I, I can't understand why such a, a measure would be taken and announced in this manner, um, on, on a calendar that was prepared months ago. Um, and, and, and obviously, you knew there would be a reaction. Um, I just don't understand what your thinking was. I'm really concerned also with the bulk items. I think that the, you know, it was, it was absolutely terrific when you opened up the recycling yard so that we could bring in our own bulk items. Um, that, that really, really helped a lot. I, I, I was shocked when I moved to this town eighteen years ago, that you charged sticker prices for bulk items. I mean, I've never, in my life, I've been in New Jersey for over forty years, and I've never seen that in any other town. I can't believe.
I, the town I came from, we had it.
Well, I don't know, this is really crazy. I mean, you know, this is not the way to do business. It obviously never really worked and never generated you a real revenue stream, and, and you should really rethink it. Thank you. Bye.
Okay, thank you. Um, Dave Cretelli, Dave?
Yeah, I, I think there's a couple of things uh, that we should look at. One, um, I, I, I agree with most of the people that have spoken about our public works. And G and Pat and JR and the rest of them have done phenomenal jobs. Um, my biggest concern is that during the summer months, especially
Yeah.
the holiday times, not picking up is going to create a potential employment problem. I mean, we have neighbors that, that put out two, three, four, you know, cans, you know, a- after a party. I, 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 I think that should be, be rethought. As far as the uh, the bulk processing, I think that's a, you know, has been going on. If we've got to pay for it, we've got to pay for it, but as we all know, we all pay pretty good taxes in this town. I, I, I just want to see the best thing for the. I, I, I just want to see the best thing for the town here.
Yep. Yeah, and David, uh, thanks for that question. Um, you know, the, the, the recycling yard is open. Uh, we've expanded those hours. Um, we are going to assess the summer. I, I think it's a valid point. And as I said before, that's something, it's one of the first things we said. We have to really take a close look at that because, you know, we anticipate that's probably something we'll have to adjust some of those resources. As Kim said, we're not cutting anybody back. We're just trying to redeploy some resources and get some people trained better so we can do uh, make some more improvements in town. Um, so uh, you know, your, all your points are well taken. Uh, appreciate the, the input.
I, 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 I have one other point.
Sure.
Now that the state has reduced and gone down on Omicron and everything else, I think it's time that we get back to face to face.
Yep.
And, and being in, in, in a town meeting rather than a hundred and fifty people on a Zoom meeting.
Y- yeah, so um, we, we committed to do this January, February because of Omicron and um, we're very optimistic. We're going to be able to move away from um, Zoom here pretty soon. So appreciate that input. Okay, um.
Marjorie McAllister. I was going to say, Marjorie McAllister was up next.
Uh, okay, I'll, I'll get Sarah and then I'll get Marjorie.
Also, please know that there's Chapman, Sanders Chapman has been, has his hands up for
Yes.
entire meeting.
I was gonna, I was gonna say the same thing.
I apologize. I don't know how to put the symbol up on the, you know, string.
Okay. All right, so we'll, we'll get, we'll get, um, I lost Sarah. Well, S- Sanders, why don't you go and um, then we'll hit Sarah, then we'll hit the uh third person and we'll, we'll go. Sorry, I, I've got.
I, I apologize if I jumped in front of somebody. Um, but Mayor, frankly, I'm a little bit flabbergasted that you say you must look into how this idea got generated and done, in fact, essentially, without the council knowing, without a number of people in the government knowing. And we're sitting here tonight and there's no explanation. There's no who did what to whom when. Um, I find that, to say the least, disappointing. Sec- secondly, and I'll try to be brief. I second the comments of many that came before me. Um, certainly you just heard about the, the manner in which this was done. The having us now to pay to bring things to the recycling center, I think is, is a terrible decision on behalf of the town. Many of us, myself included. And in the summer, I'm there from the middle of May through the end of September, October. And in the winter, three days a week, four days a week, a week at a time, um, back and forth to our, our home up north. Um, and I love this town. I've been there for seventy years, seventy-five actually. But it was a luxury to be able to take the stuff to the recycling center, not wait for the, the bulk, not wait for it to be picked up and not have to pay for it. Um, we do pay a lot in taxes. And I admire the job that the Department of Public Works does to no end. But I, I think it's terrible. And to say you're redeploying resources, let's pull a spade a spade. You're saving money somehow.
Hello?
It, it's, it's totally an economic decision and I appreciate the, the, the patina you tried to put on that, that it's a, a redeployment of resources. And it may be, but it's economic and it's really very unfair.
Well, it's, it's, I, I would, I would say not economic in the st- from the standpoint of saving dollars. What we're doing, what we're striving to do is increase value and the value being, can we do more with those resources and get more done to improve the community? So uh, as Kim said, we're not cutting anybody back. Um, so we're not saving dollars that way. We may save some dollars on fuel and um, you know, make truck maintenance and stuff like that, but not, you know, this isn't a, this isn't a move to um, um, you know, to uh, save a bunch of money. It's, it's really, it's really of more of a value.
Not, not to belabor the point, but effectively what you're doing is you're getting people in, your, your employees in town to do other things rather than do the recycling. And therefore they're accomplishing tasks which, if you wanted them done, would have to be done either with an independent contractor to cost the town money or with other resources in town. So in effect, you are, but okay.
Okay.
That's, that's not the worst part of this.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate your input. Um.
Mayor?
Yeah.
Would it be possible that if someone has already spoken to log off to allow other people in the waiting room in? Um, and it will also be posted, the rest of this meeting will be posted on the website. We did upgrade with Zoom, so everyone does know. We're just not sure why it hasn't taken effect. We sent in for an upgrade and it's not registering and we should have had the capability of three hundred people and it's not allowing us and they're not answering their.
Before the resist the town, I'll be the first to sign off.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, um, what, so it's either Sarah Strasser or um, Tim, I can't remember the name of the other person.
You said Sarah and then uh Marjorie McAllister.
Got it, okay. All right, okay, so Sarah then Marjorie. Thank you. Sarah, where are you? There you are. Sorry, I got off mute.
As part of the uh.
Sorry, you got, thank you, Sarah. Good, Sarah.
I just have a couple of questions and a few comments. Okay, so first of all, um, half the town hasn't received a calendar. Half the town has not received a calendar, myself included, my mother's friends. So nobody knew about it until I saw an email go around. That's number one.
Okay.
No, number two. Um, the website, a lot, some older people in this town don't know how to use a computer. The website, even for myself, whom I'm on a computer all day long, is very un-user friendly.
Okay.
Number two.
Got it.
So it would be hard for someone to find it if they're not resourceful. Number three, I think we can gather that everyone in the town is upset that everyone's repeating the same thing. Um, they feel that they've been undercut and, and this was done behind their backs. They pay taxes, I pay taxes. So probably the best thing to do is to maybe try to push this off for a bit to find out what really happened, get to the bottom of it before other things happen within the town, because this town is known for all the troubles that they have. Number three. Next thing is, if you need to use the personnel for other things, then why don't we go back to having Mazza or Delissa pick up the garbage and the recycling? And pay for it so that we don't have this problem. And the next thing is, we're now going to be, if we have to go to this, this bi-monthly, you know, every two weeks, that means we have to buy new garbage cans again after the atrocity we had a few years ago before you were mayor about the garbage cans having to be small and everyone had to buy new garbage cans. Now we'll have to all buy new garbage cans, multiple garbage cans. Then if this is how the town wants to do it, they should provide the garbage cans.
Okay, got it. Got it.
And so you see what I'm saying? There's a lack of communication all the way down. No calendars, no, no information. If you, if you can't use a computer, and I, I can use a computer, it's a problem and people feel like that.
Yep. Okay, I appreciate it, Sarah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mayor, it seems as though we would have to restart. Um, I don't know if you can extend the meeting or not. You could log off at the log off time or not. I don't know if somebody can ask. But um, if we, we get back on, I would let whoever is ready to speak, speak. But if we open up the session again, the people that are waiting will be allowed in, but I would say stay as it is now. Um, and I just, just to let you know, there is a chance that when this is over, if we log back in, there might be a chance that people can speak that were anybody to get on.
Okay, so why don't we take Marjorie's um question and then we can, so your recommendation is log off and log back on quickly?
I would actually wait till everyone that's on can speak and then if everyone on has spoken, that we see if we can restart it if people would want to dial back in.
Got it. Okay, thank you, Marjorie. Thank you.
Hey, yeah, I'm not Marjorie. Uh, she's my wife. I'm Bob McAllister. Um, and first a, a comment, Mayor. Um, the changing the recycling uh schedule is a significant inconvenience for people in the town, as you're hearing. Um, and it's, to me, it's significant reduction in services to the taxpayers. And in light of that, and in light of all of our desires to promote recycling and try to help the environment however we can, your rationale for doing it frankly sounds pretty soft. Redeploying workers, i- if you were to tell me, oh, you know, we're going to be able to reduce staff by X and that's going to save us this much and it's going to mean taxes are not going to increase as much, that's, that's pretty persuasive, but saying, oh, we'll take some people here and we'll put them over there. Um, and, you know, as the gentleman earlier said, y- y- yeah, you know, if they're not put over there, then you're going to have to hire somebody else to do it. You could quantify it that way, but based upon what you've said so far, I, I don't really find it very persuasive. I, it, it feels to me like a decision was made. You weren't involved, council wasn't involved. And now we're trying to come up with a rationale for this decision.
Uh, so the rationale of the decision, and, and I'll, I'll repeat it, that um, it frees up about eighty hours a month um for cross-training for other projects. So there was a rationale. That's always, the, my understanding is that rationale has always been there. The other rationale is that we do dirt, at least nine months out of the year, underutilize um resources because our off-season recycling by and large is down forty to forty-five percent. So you know, we can, we can say what's soft and what's hard here, but um, I, I put a lot of value in getting people cross-trained. I put a lot of value in progressive projects that we've, we, when you think about the projects we worked on last year with Public Works, things like redoing our um Promenade, the boardwalk part of the Promenade, the horseshoe, um, redoing some of the sidewalks like on Lake Terrace Drive. Um, there's a number of projects like that, that we want to continue to try to, to do and, and eighty hours a month of additional resources isn't small. So um, you know, we can, we can debate whether that's large or small. To me, that's a pretty significant uh uh, resource and uh, we want to be able to train um our newer employees and our younger employees so that they can do multiple things for us going forward. And right now, we don't have the ability to do that uh, because we're, we're tight with resources right now.
Okay.
So I'm not, I'm not, I'm not arguing your point to say you're, you're necessarily wrong. I'm just trying to give you our point of view.
Okay, yeah, because you do have to weigh it against the inconvenience to the taxpayers, the feeling that our services are being reduced. Um, so the other item that I wanted to um mention was with respect to the bulk.
Yep.
Um, what, in, in essence, what you're saying is you're going to limit what can be brought to the yard and require that it be put on the curb and have stickers. So is that what we're doing? Is we're going to take some of our DPW employees who are now doing the recycling collection and having them pick up these items which currently
No.
Mayor, no, Mayor, excuse me. Excuse me. Yeah, which currently people are bringing to the dump.
Yeah.
And now we're going to have employees picking up those. So is that how you plan to redeploy resources?
No, right now, um, today, we have our employees picking up bulk as we speak. Um, that happens um all over town. Um, and it's, it's on, on, on your trash day. I could effectively today put out bulk a hundred and four times a year. I could do that. Now, what we're finding is we're mixing that with our regular trash collection. So as they collect trash, we're also collecting bulk. The, the feedback that we've gotten is that's not really effective and efficient. Um, you know, that's not the best way to approach it. So that's the, kind of the recommendation that, and, and what went into um the thought process um to get this in a more systemic manner. Right now too, when we go to the um, to dispose of our waste, we estimate what that is to the, to the um, the yard that we bring it into and the cost of that waste uh for bulk's about a hundred and thirty dollars a ton versus household um, waste of eighty-five dollars versus recycling of about seventy-eight dollars. So we estimate that and it's really not accurate and um, it's, you know, it's something we should be doing a better job of in how we manage it, so.
So, so did, I, I'm sorry, did I understand you to say that currently the trucks are combining the trash with the bulk?
Yes, and that will be the case in the future.
So, so what does that have to do with people bringing things to the dump to drop off? I, I don't see, I don't see the connection.
No, no, I'm saying that we're, we're trying to get a, a more organized systemic approach for pickups of bulk. That's what I was saying. I'm sorry.
Okay. Uh, look, I, I, I am with those who have spoken, who have said that we don't like the way this decision was made. We don't like the way it was communicated. And in light of all that, we ought to put it on hold until this gets sorted out. And the people of Bradley Beach get comfortable with what you're proposing to do.
Okay, thanks for your input. Thank you.
True.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, we've got uh Mr. Cohen up next and then Ms. Lukenda.
Yeah, thank you. Six twelve Third Avenue. Um, I, I just am very upset about the fact that we elected officials who are our voice as councilmen. They were not involved in the formulating of this policy and they are not at this meeting tonight. And that is my issue. I appreciate all the comments everyone made. But to keep the council out of this process and not include this, them in this meeting i- is a violation of the Open Public Meetings Act. Under NJSA ten colon four dash eleven, no person or public body shall fail to invite a portion of its members to a meeting for the purpose of circumventing the provisions of this act. This is an improper meeting because our full council isn't here because the administration did not properly notice so that they could attend. And, and that's again, another administrative failure after another administrative failure. And I appreciate everyone's comments, but this is an improper meeting in my mind and we'll take this up in another jurisdiction. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen. Um.
Um, if I could just interrupt for a moment, uh, uh, Mr. Giantempo emailed me his comments. Uh, he's, he waited for a long time, so I'd like to read them if I could and then go to Ms. Lukenda. So uh, from uh, Mr. Giantempo, it's a tough recycling market, very tricky, few shipping containers available and some countries are being problematic. Mr. Cofone knows the problems and understands the market, which after all is what it is, a market that goes up and down. Mr. Cofone has the expertise. I'm sticking with his recommendations. Jack Giantempo.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Mr. Giantempo. I wish we could have got your voice on there. Thank you. Uh, Ari.
I'm sorry, it's Cindy Lukenda.
Hi, Mayor. Um, I don't want to beleaguer all the points everybody made because we all feel the same way that we're obviously somehow paying taxes, evidently more taxes each year and now, you know, we're mysteriously getting our, our services reduced. Um, my biggest question on all of this is, and everybody's asked you seven ways to Sunday, and I know it's not easy being a public official um, with something that's a hot topic, but what is really truly stopping you from just tabling the decision? Whether it was made yesterday, a week ago, a month ago, whether it was before something was printed, you have your entire constituency not happy with something that may or may not be able to be changed. But until the transparency is given, why can you or why are you refusing not to just table this decision and say, you know what, maybe we made a mistake. Maybe we didn't have the proper communication. Let's just all sit back and relax a second. Let me take thirty days, find out what I need to do and then let's come together as a group and do what's best for the whole community. do what's best for the whole community.
That's it. Relative to the point I made about the decision-making process, we'll have a, an after-action answer on that, and a, a pretty thorough, formalized answer. You know, the case of that to both or underscriptions.
Mr. Mayor, you're breaking up. Sorry to interrupt, but you're breaking up, Mr. Mayor.
Looking at what we're trying to do and why we're trying to do it. I'm sorry.
I said you're breaking up, Mr. Mayor. Your voice is breaking up. It's very difficult to hear you.
Your Wi-Fi connection is going.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yeah, now we can hear you, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so again, I think on the what happened and why it happened, we'll have an answer on that within a matter of a few days, three to four days. In the context of what we're trying to do and why we're trying to do it, I'm down from you know, we, we did benchmark other communities, and community around us does what we're proposing to do. Avon, Spring Lake, Spring Lake Heights, Madison Square, Neptune City, Neptune, and Seegurt. We get some value out of this. That change. But we believe right now that it's the right change to make. I don't think we've given it maybe the opportunity to see if it works well. I said, when this change was announced, the recs shortly thereafter, we'll certainly continue to look at it, and we'll make adjustments as is appropriate, so. We're not adverse to making a change. We're not adverse to revising parts of this process. Nothing that I've seen operationally to me doesn't make a reasonable amount of sense. Clearly, we've gotten feedback, and we should, we're going to take that feedback, and we're going to dial that into a discussion in the next few days. But I want to do that with the, with, with the appropriate administrative folks that are responsible for this. So thank you for that question.
Yeah, I thank you for that, but however, it's, it's still, you know, the situation that everything you want to do after the fact, to perhaps put a Band-Aid back on to a wound that you've ripped open, why can you just not say, listen, I'm hearing what you're all saying now, let me go do my research, we'll come back March first with all the information you've all come through and said, hey,
We're losing you.
We, we thought ABC would work, but with everything we've seen, maybe just be is the answer. And then get the buy-in, and then you're not having to backpedal or to change or go left or right, or worry about bringing services back up in the summer, which we know we're going to need because of the population growth. We're just all trying to understand, why can you just not put the pause button for thirty days? Let alone it's February, there's not even thirty days in it, you can have less time. I think that would make everybody a whole lot happier, just to understand and be part of, part of the process.
Yep. Was that Althea still speaking, or?
No, that was Cindy Lukenda. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Cindy.
You're very welcome, sir.
Ari, Ari Black is up next, and then Tom McGuire, Mr. Mayor.
No, I think Ari just, Althea just spoke, I think it was.
No, no, that was Ms. Lukenda.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought that was Althea. I'm sorry. Yeah.
So a, a few quick things that are, I think, a little different than what people have said. The first is, if you're telling me that recycling, you know, that the volume is only forty percent of what it is in the summer, in some ways, A, that's not a very relevant metric, because you're talking about the people who live here and what our needs are. So as part of the process, I could tell you, I know someone mentioned also that we're willing to give, and if it means trash only once a week, and then you said we view that as a public safety hazard. If you ask the people in this town, I know you live here as well, I always have an overflowing recycling. We're in the age of Amazon. You're talking about no place to put, you know, the boxes, the cans, the bottles. My recycling is always full, my garbage is usually not. Recently, I have this need. It doesn't need to be rolled out. There could be a poll. I imagine I'm fairly representative, and we're a two-person household. And we have the need for the current schedule, and if anything like that's not enough. So what are we supposed to do? Obviously, also, it doesn't help the environment if we all then drive, fill our, you know, cars up with an extra bag of bottles and drop it off or whatever. I understand it saves the, you know, the trucks, but it also just, you know, it's actually surprising if you're saying it's only forty percent of the volume, then, and we're a quarter of the people, like something is not tracking, or the people who live here full-time have more recycling. I can't explain it, but I don't understand what I do on a weekly basis. Where is all that going to go? How is that not going to be ugly? Are we requiring seniors and people who don't have money to now buy multiple extra garbage cans, as was brought up? It just strikes me as a terrible idea. Before rolling it out, I know that I have the need for the current schedule, and I imagine the other full-time residents do as well. That's sort of a long part one, and then the part two is, how are you gauging this? What is the, aside from, you know, like, the hours and how successfully they learn or do other things, but how are you gauging this? Are we looking at, does it get, do the streets get less clean? Are we looking at how inconvenience the residents are? Like, I, I really don't understand as a practical matter what each family is supposed to do. Because it seems to me there's no way to avoid requiring the family to drive to the dump at least once a week and things we didn't need to do.
Okay, very good. I appreciate the feedback, Ari, and you know, clearly, when you talk about metrics, we will, you know, in Public, one, one of the things Public Works does a pretty good job of is keeping an eye on what's working and what's not. And if we see elements of this that aren't working, we'd certainly make adjustments quickly. So, you know, one, one that's already come up is the film weight, you know, the film weight. So we'll, we'll look at that, and we'll continue to talk through this and, and talk through this feedback. Thank you.
Tom McGuire was up next, and then Dave Crotelli's got his hand up, but he already took a bite at the apple, so I don't know if we want to, at that point, go to, try and log out and log in to see if there's more folks that want to talk.
Yeah, why don't we hit Tom, and then we'll log out, log in.
Hi, how you doing? I'm, I'm pretty upset. I'm upset just because I've been, I, for the past forty-five minutes, just trying even to get into the meeting and just listening to people. So I honestly don't know everything. I had to listen through a Facebook Live. I really wish Biagio was here so he can answer some more questions, because there's a lot of about the metrics and about what's happening. And I, I honestly don't feel, Mr. Mayor, you've answered any questions well. I don't think you've satisfied anyone's needs and desires for what's going on. There's a lot of wills, should've, could've's.
Mr. McGuire, I'm here, by the way.
Oh, great. Thank you for being here. Sorry, I knew you got kicked off. So the three to four days a week, three to four days on the what and why is very concerning. The fact that you don't already have that information on why you made a decision prior to the calendar being printed is, how, how don't you have that information? You can't tell us right now. You should be able to have that information if you already came up with the information.
What, what information are you looking for, Mr. McGuire?
You just said that you're going to take three to four days to give out the information on the what and why, and come out with the more about communication.
No, 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 no. I said that there was some issues with the process of how, you know, the question, the question that has come up is how this decision was made, and I initiated a formal review of that with our HR and Labor attorney to say, let's get very clear on how this decision was made, what the communications were, and recommended actions. So that's what I said will be three to four days.
So that's, that's exactly what I just said, that we still don't have a clear-cut answer on why and what, and that it has to go through, I, I, I understand there's possible formalities, but the fact that you still can't give those answers is concerning.
I have a pretty good idea of what happened, but because there's such a set of questions saying, who knew what, when, I, I'm not going to, I'm not going to speculate and say, you know, I, I'm, I'm fairly certain of I knew what happened, but
I hope so. You're the mayor.
I'd rather formalize it and
Mayor, I can actually speak to it since it involves me, and you don't have to then break any laws. Being that there was miscommunication without the mayor and council knowing, if there's any reprimands that are coming down the pipe, that will happen for the miscommunication, and the information not getting to the mayor and council prior to the residents, and that goes for any other employee that's involved with what happened here. I think that was, that's one issue. The issue with the reasoning why it was done, that's a different thing. That's, that's different. That's, that would be more G, and I could answer those probably better.
Thank you. I just have a few more things to go over, as far as what was it? The cross, you said that you're going to free up eighty hours per month, and you're going to be, is that approximately twenty hours per week for cross-training? Can you give more specifics on that? I know you said, is that just, I mean,
We do a lot of projects, Mr. McGuire, in town. We do a lot of projects. If you guys have noticed, we, we redid the boardwalk.
And it looks great.
Yeah, I appreciate it. We have a footbridge that separates Bradley Beach from, from Ocean Grove, which would be Neptune. We're going to redo that. We're going to be the lead agency on that. We're working on the rec center, saving the borough a lot of money with the manpower that we currently have in-house. We have to do work in Borough Hall. We have to make a finance office. We have to make the new business administrator office. So we have a lot of stuff, and I, I like to keep the tradition of the public works that I feel that I'm a part of building. And if the, the small thing we have to give back is the recycling in the off-season for now, I, I think that I can rely on my residents to stand behind us on that. If Madison Square could do it, if Spring Lake can do it, why can't we do it?
Yeah, and I agree a one hundred percent, and I think honestly, everyone on this call would appreciate that and agree with that if they were told, and
Listen, that, that, you're right.
That's it. My wife and I have said that. We said like, if we would have known, and we, we probably would have said, great, this is a great idea. We can get more things done. We, we appreciate everything that you do. You're doing such, we get so many compliments, even in my office, on how good the Department of Public Works is. And I say it all the time. We have the cleanest, nicest. It's great. I just feel it's, this just could have been
And, and I got to be honest, my mayor's taking a beating for this tonight, and it's, it's really, and, and this has got nothing to do with him. I owe him nothing. I've been there twenty-six years. I think I got more clout than he has. I'm telling you now, this had nothing to do with my mayor. I, I should have got it out quicker. I've been thinking about it for three years, so everybody blamed me, but this is something I feel that will help the community now and in the future, because we want to make sure we build the men that we have to do in projects, so we don't have to contract work out and pay six, seven times the amount of money that we should.
Yeah, I agree. Agree. Yeah. Thank you so much, Biagio. My, my wife is going to talk now because she just can't get on.
So I appreciate that, and yes, had this been a workshop prior, I would have
Your name? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Brigitte McGuire. I would have been totally for it. I mean, one hundred percent. The issue here, I'd like to direct right to Mayor Fox. If this was a DP, if this was DPW's decision, if it was DPW's fault, if it was Kim's fault, it is the job of the mayor to take the input of the people of the town, especially after days of people on social media basically begging for answers, begging for answers. I absolutely love living in this town for the past twelve years. There is nothing I desire more than living a happy, joyful life in a small, short town. A community that can smile, be kind and respectful regardless of differences is a pretty magical thing. In this past year, Mayor, observing your body language and watching your actions, it is as if you hold a disdain for the residents of this town. It is as if you just hear voices speak, but you do not listen or take in the input while you just put forth your own thoughts and policies. We are not a private company to manage. We are the people of Bradley Beach who seem like very decent adults, who probably would have been fine trying out winter of changing the recycling schedule, as I said, had we had the ability to share during a workshop and been asked our input as respectable taxpayers. I want to be asked to share my thoughts based on something as basic as recycling in a beach town. I would like to be heard with respect and empathy and would expect that from an elected leader. I don't want to walk these blocks with a sour taste in my mouth because of chaos regarding recycling rules being put forth like a king. I feel this town hall is just damage control to let us think our voices matter while we all let it out, and you will be on your merry way doing what you want, because it's the pattern you have created for me to expect in this past year. I hope this is not the case. I hope you're willing to, to table this. It's a new year. Instead, I'd love to greet you, Mayor, on the boardwalk with a smile, appreciating you for your empathy to each and every resident, thanking you for your actions based on true democracy, and shaking your hand for the service you offer to Bradley Beach. I really, really hope you're going to back up and start over from scratch at this point. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Is this a good time to try to sign off, sign on, Kim, or? We're actually
I would just continue to let people speak at this point. I, I, I'm afraid that if Zoom didn't correct anything, that we would just lose people.
I think we only have one more person, Noreen. Why don't we wrap it up with Noreen?
It's, it's Noreen, and then there's Louise Millman and Kim Baker are all on, and then Dave Crotelli and Cindy Lukenda, as I said, have each had a bite at the apple.
Okay. So why don't we, that was five people, Tim?
There's, there's Noreen who's getting ready to speak, then there's Louise Millman and Kim Baker. That's it.
Okay, why don't we, why don't we hear from those three, and then we'll, we're already over time.
Okay, I'll just jump in. Thank you. Thanks, Mayor, and thanks to my neighbors as well for everyone gathering. I really just put my hand up after Thomas McGuire just spoke, because I wanted to pick up on something he said, which was, Biagio, as you shared, you mentioned that it's, you're, you guys are talking about this being potentially an off-season thing. That's been my question from the very beginning, and I was not able to get into the beginning of the meeting, so it might have been addressed. So if it is an off-season thing, I personally am more amenable to that experiment. So that's something I'd love to know, whether that's a
Yeah, so, yeah, I, I tried to cover that upfront, Noreen, and, and let me say that, so a couple of things. First, I don't know if you heard this or not, but our, our off-season volume is down forty to forty-five percent. And that's, that's a pretty close number, or a pretty accurate number. So we can free up some resources, and I, I went through all that, but I did say that probably, you know, the Memorial Day to Labor Day, the summer season, you know, we don't foresee, we foresee us probably having to staff and go to, you know, eat, you know, each, once a week. So that's probably what will happen. We're, we're trying to really closely assess this. We'll, we'll set up metrics, really look at what's working, what's not, and, and try to optimize everything that we're, we're talking about. So yes, the answer to your question is we will critically look at that, and it's probably going to go that way.
All right, and I do think then that that's what everyone's talking about, is knowing the definites of this decision. So, you know, you talked about having some, some more clarity about the chain of command, so to speak, but also, I guess, the, the full parameters of the decision in three to four days, but that actually coincides with the first day that this is supposed to be effective, right? That'd be Wednesday. So that goes back to the bigger conversation of potentially tabling this until we really do know what the parameters are, or at least defining the terms of an experiment, if that's what's going on. So I think that that clarity is what the whole community is looking for right now. And then my final comment is really just going to be what, to again echo what Mr. McGuire said. which is, I think, the exceptional work that our DPW team does do and our town. And it is constantly looking sharper than the rest of the towns. And so I just want to thank you. So that's it for me. Thanks.
Thank you, Noreen. Louise?
Good evening. Louise Millman, 502 Park Place. First of all, I was unable to get into this meeting for a while. And with the thousands of people that live in the town of Bradley Beach, I was really very, very, very shocked to learn that only 100 people could attend this meeting. Okay, so that's, so is that going to be rectified in the future is my question.
I heard from Kim that she said we had gotten a 300-person deal, but it apparently didn't kick in.
Again, but there are, there are many more than 300 people who may or may not choose to come into a community meeting. And I think it's really important for us to have equal and total access 100% of the time.
No, I agree. I agree, Louise. And hopefully, somebody made the question before or raised the question before. We're hoping to get away from Zoom, hopefully by the end of February. But having said that, with this pandemic, we might be in and out of it. So we'll look at, you know, how we can max out Zoom and but do it in a cost-effective way. But
Okay, thank you very much for that. And second of all, I'm not only a part-time resident. I used to be a part-time resident. I'm now a full-time resident and I've retired here. And I really do like the services as they are. Public Works does an excellent job, excellent job each and every day. They're very, very friendly people. They're great. And they always do a really terrific job. And I think what we have is appropriate for what we need in the town. You know, I had written to you in the summertime, you know, requesting a few more days of brush cleanup and never heard anything. And now I'm learning that the recycling is now going to be cut back. And, you know, I just, I think that the residents need a forum and a chance to speak and to let you know what we need. And it's not a lot of, it's not a lot. You know, we're not asking for marble, you know, statues at the beach. We're looking to just, you know, keep our properties really clean. And we live in really small lots. You know, a lot of us are in very tiny little places. So asking us to keep, you know, several weeks' worth of recyclables and brush and things like that. I mean, I think we need a little bit more as opposed to less. That's my opinion. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Louise. Appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, we had one more ad. It's GCF's iPhone.
Okay, but that's fine. We'll cut it off at that, Tim. Thanks. But we had one. But Louise, we have Kim. Kim Baker. Kim.
Kim seems to have dropped off.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, GCF.
Hi, thank you very much. This is Leslie Farrenbach. I agree with the concerns about the communication issues, but that aside, would also like to ask that the town should just pause for a bit and reconsider this decision. I think that we pay enough in taxes that we shouldn't have to pay for bulk. Feel pretty strongly about that. I think we could do a trial period or a trial year on this change in recycling. I've been a homeowner here for many years, but just recently retired here full-time from East Brunswick. I can tell you when they changed from weekly recycling pickup to every other week, people were really up in arms, but everybody got used to it. However, the town did provide for extra containers at no charge so that if you needed an extra container, because it was every other week, then you could have one. I do agree with the woman who spoke before me that we do have small lots. Not everyone has garages like you might have in a place like East Brunswick. So there is a concern about just vermin and bugs. If you're keeping things for two weeks rather than a week, having them be picked up. So understanding that everyone is, not everyone, but some people are resistant to change, I think it might be a good idea just to take a pause, consider the suggestions that have been made here and get back to the community with your recommendations on this. Lastly, I would just like to say that I'm really happy to see that there'll be recycling for film. I have not done that before, but I have been amazed now that I am saving it up, how quickly that accumulates. And I think someone else recommended also that it may need to be picked up possibly a little bit more frequently than what is on the schedule. And in closing, would just like to thank you very much for the opportunity to speak and hear the comments of my neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you, Leslie. I grew up in Milltown, so I know East Brunswick very well. Thank you. Okay, we're at 8:53. So I want to thank everybody for their input. It was very valuable. We'll continue to assess this and, you know, we'll keep everybody updated via the website and our Facebook pages. Thank you, everybody, for your inputs and have a good night.
Night, everyone.
Night.
Thank you.
Don't reelect these people.
Voting is important.